All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the motion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
All right. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizen participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Amendment? Come on up.
Donna Faran, 278 South Meadow Village. I just wanted just to come in here and just say thank you to all of you. I know the year's coming to an end coming up in April, and I just want to say thank you to all of you. It's been a trying year. I'm sure of all of you and everything and serving, and we appreciate the volunteering that you do for our town. I just want to say thank you. That's all.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anyone else this evening, so moving right along, we move to the next item on our agenda, which is a discussion and possible vote on several annual town meeting warrant articles. And the first item we'll take up is the solar payment in lieu of taxes agreements. And folks, if you'd like to come up once again. All right, this is Article 12. I know we discussed this earlier in executive session. Is there a motion to recommend Article 12? To put Article 12 on the warrant?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It is unanimous. And is there a motion to recommend Article 12?
I move that we recommend Article 12.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yes, I would just like for the public to understand that if we lose these, the first three solar pilot programs will revert back to their old one and will still be in, under legal...
The lefty.
In accord. In accord.
They'll still be at the ATB.
ATB, okay. And what does ATB mean?
The Appellate Tax Board.
Okay. And then for the last ones in CARFA, if that, if we fail to support the pilot program on this one, it will be taxed as personal property tax.
Correct.
And that will eventually, the panels will depreciate over time, and that burden will be shifted to the rest, to the taxpayers, the other taxpayers in town.
All right. Are there any questions from any members of the board, any of the parts of the solar pilot article? All right. Mr. Fennessey, do you have any comments on this?
No.
All right. Mr. Corvo, anything?
Nope.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
All right, one to one. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move back to Article 5, the capital improvements budget. I'm sorry, Article 4, the North Carver Water District Debt Service. Mr. Fennessey? This was a late add to the agenda.
So this was put in as a standalone article before it was part of the budget article, but moving it out will give it its own separate time to debate it. Will also, that portion of the article will be two-thirds vote to pass it. If it stayed in the first article, then the whole thing would need a two-thirds vote instead of what is normally a majority vote.
The whole why?
The whole budget.
Oh, the whole budget. We did two-thirds.
So I think that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense to have it as a standalone, standalone article.
All right, any questions from the board on this?
I have a question hearing that. What was the rationale for pulling it out? Were we not confident that the overall budget would pass? So we want to make sure it does now that, now that the capital improvement budget only needs a majority instead of a two-thirds?
Well, that's...
Did Jim and my vote last time impact it at all? So now that it has changed from two-thirds to majority?
Not from my perspective.
So through you, Mr. Chair, so this isn't part of the capital budget. This is part of the regular town budget for salaries and expenses and the school and all that. And this was the only part of it that had an appropriation from a stabilization fund. And so that would be the only part of it that would require a two-thirds vote, but because it's all, was all part of the same motion, that would then convert the entire budget to a two-thirds vote. And so Bob and I discussed it earlier today, and we thought it would make sense to pull this out separately, let this article have its two-thirds vote, and then the budget would be subject to a majority vote, just like it always is.
Okay.
And it won't affect the capital, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on Article 4? Is there a motion to place Article 4 on the warrant?
I move that we place Article 4, the North Carver Water District Debt Service article, on the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend Article 4?
I move that we recommend Article 4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right, Article 5, capital improvement budget. Mr. Fennessey, are there changes here?
So if you pull out the insert here, that was put in packet, capital budget and Article 5. So this makes it more clear. There's three parts to this. The vote, the first vote would be if there's bonding is done for the library roof, library painting, town hall roof, and the architectural design for the library and town hall roofs. So if that passes, then that would be category one. Okay? So you can see the equipment that would be purchased through that, through category one. The second, category two, is that if it fails, the bonding on the original motion, then the option would be to go to category two. And category two is the, without bonding, but with the closing of several old town articles, town meeting articles, and utilizing the funding for that. So that amount, going back a little, the first amount was 3.966921, 3,966,921. That's including that amount for the bonding, the 850,000, 235,000, 550,000, and 50,000. So if you look at category two, you'll see Xs, and those are the things that will be knocked out by approving category two, which is utilizing the stabilization fund for capital as well as the money for articles that would be put in there. And there's a number of Xs there. You can look at that. And number three is, is kind of the basic. It's just utilizing the funds from stabilization and not the funds from the articles that would be turned away.
But I guess my question is, didn't we vote on this at our last select board meeting? I thought we voted to recommend option one at the last select board meeting.
Did you? Okay. I don't know why.
There was a three-day...
We have one change.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if we had this in this format when we last looked at it.
There was more mathematical correction down in this room.
Yeah, yeah.
It was excellently open.
Yeah, I thought it looked similar to me.
I think there was a typo too on one of the guy.
Well, well, why don't we, we already voted to put the Article 5 on the warrant.
It was Article 4 before, so now you changed that to Article 5.
Okay, well, okay, well, why don't we take new votes just to ensure ourselves? First of all, is there a motion to put Article 5 on the warrant?
So moved.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. So one thing I just noticed that Bob had mentioned was the use of capital stabilization, and I don't see that in any of the motions.
Is that the 977? Oh, I'm sorry, it's from free cash.
Free cash.
Initially, that was one of the records. Initially, it was stabilization, but it's actually free cash.
Well, then we should, there's been these changes. Mr. Fennessey, could you outline for us what changes there are from this to the last one we voted on?
So there was a typo on one of the articles, and John picked up on it on a number that was inverted on one. There was same thing that it had stabilization in here for that $997,996. You see that in proposed motion one and two and three on the second page of this. That changed.
It's now free cash.
Free cash. And it was always meant to be free cash.
Right, right. I just...
Now, do the new barracks change at all in the line item detail?
Yeah. Okay. So I would suggest just re-voting it again.
Okay.
As Article 5.
Is there a motion to put Article 5 on the warrant?
I made that motion.
Okay. I couldn't recall.
That's okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on placing Article 5 on the warrant. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. All right, is there a motion to recommend? Motion one?
I move that we recommend motion one of Article 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of commending option, proposed motion one?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
No.
Three to two. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we will receive, taking care of number 12. Number 13, Article 13, the Finance Committee Isle. And so you're aware, the Chair of the Finance Committee could not be with us this evening. He did send an email to the board. There's a copy of that email in your packets if you haven't had a chance to read it. If you haven't had a chance and you'd like a minute to read it, I'll give everybody a minute. Did everybody have a chance to see it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We did quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting about this. Would someone like to start us off?
I think that we should recommend it as written since the whole FinCom, I mean, recommend to put it on the warrant as written, excuse me, since the entire FinCom was in favor of the article. It's a separate issue from whether we recommend it. I'm just suggesting we put it on the warrant as written.
All right. Are there thoughts on that?
Well, I have a question. We left the last meeting. I thought we were going to ask Mr. Corvo to write something that would only have the Finance Committee members be on the Finance Committee, I believe, because I think Jim brought up the fact, well, what are we looking for for the next time? Did anyone reach out to you to craft some wording to fix that?
I think the reason we asked Mr. Corvo to join us here this evening is to craft that wording. I think that's...
Oh, so it wasn't in the meantime?
No, I think that was the reason to ask Mr. Corvo to join us this evening.
Okay.
So, and I think substantially what we're talking about is the very last section. We've taken votes on just about everything else, 4.3.7, which is on page, page 14. So, Monsieur Owens would like to include that?
I just, I mean, I took Mr. Germain's point and thought about that. I, I don't personally agree with the way it's written, but that's the way that the Finance Committee wrote it, and apparently it was unanimous vote. And what Jen said was true. We all were in agreement that we were going to rewrite this, but those are just my thoughts.
Okay, so clarifying question, I guess, on how this could roll out. It goes on the warrant as written. Whatever, we've already approved the first two sections.
Approved.
Firstly, everything except, except 4.3.7. I mean, I think there was one section, I apologize, that we withdrawn.
So just for the sake of arguments, let's just say it goes as it is with the select board if they don't agree with the 4.3.7, did not vote to approve, and then an amendment would be done on the floor with the new language that would come up tonight?
It could be, yeah.
Is that typically the way it would work?
Right.
Or someone could amend it. They could amend it before the vote, right? You wouldn't vote.
Well, no, yeah, you'd make an amendment when the article came up for discussion.
Right. But if I was saying John wrote it, it wouldn't be voted defeated because then the article's dead. Wouldn't it be an amendment before the vote?
Mr. Corvo?
Right, so there's several different ways we can approach this. We can decide to come up with different wording here this evening than that is what would go on the warrant. Or you can go with what is already here, and then that would go on the warrant. When we get to town meeting, someone will make a motion to present the changes as printed in the warrant, whatever they end up being. Then, once it's in front of the meeting, it can be the subject of a motion to amend. So somebody could say, I move to amend to strike all the changes to 4.3.7 so that it stays the same that it is. Or I make a motion to amend to replace the changes to 4.3.7 with some different changes to 4.3.7. And then we would vote on that amendment. If that amendment passes, that then becomes the operative language, and then we ultimately vote on the article as a whole.
I don't know. It just, it seems to me a lot simpler for us to adopt language similar to what we discussed at the last meeting, and if the FinCom seeks to change at a town meeting, they can offer an amendment. I think they're the, they're the folks that are seeking to change the existing bylaw. That's just my, my thoughts.
May I speak?
Sure.
I agree with Mark. This is something that the select board discussed years ago toward the beginning of my term. We were working on it. We had many discussions over meetings. We talked about just being on the Finance Committee. We talked about if you're on the Finance Committee, you can't be on any other boards that grant permits. So we discussed other options, and the way that we left things there was that there was going to be like a subcommittee to discuss it, and I believe Sarah was on it with Allen or I don't know what. After we voted it, it disappeared. But now we're presented with a bylaw written by, according to Mr. Germain's email, by two members of the Finance Committee themselves. So there was no collaboration between us and them as far as this wording goes. So I agree with Mark that I would like us to get wording that we are comfortable with and put that forth at town meeting. Because we have been working on this for years. It went away for a little bit, but like this is not new to us. We did a lot of work before, so I agree with Mark.
And if I could just ask for what I think is a point of clarification for what you just said. There was, we did come up with a subcommittee to work on this.
It was me, Mr. Delpin, and two members of the Finance Committee.
And just, they couldn't agree.
We couldn't agree.
That's what happened.
True, true.
It wasn't that they just, they went away. They just couldn't find common ground. That's my, that's my opinion. What are the thoughts from the rest of the board?
Well, I guess if you wanted to just hear what yours, what the possible new language might be?
Well, I think, I think we, I mean, Monsieur, Monsieur Owens has offered her opinion that she thinks we should put the article on the, on the warrant. We should put 4.3.7, 4.3.7 on the warrant as, with the language in front of us. I think we should decide.
And again, I actually disagree with this language. I think it should say something very simple, like if you're a member of the Finance Committee, you can't be another member of a town committee order commission.
That's my, I think it should be as simple as possible. The only thought I had in the ensuing period between last week's meeting and this week's meeting is perhaps, and Mr. Corvo, you can tell me whether this is something that's doable or not, but perhaps we should put some wording on there. This has happened in other articles, I believe, in town to allow people that are currently on a different existing board to finish out their existing terms. And I think, I think Mr. Germain's term on the Conservation Commission is very soon. It's up in June, I think, of this year. And I don't know when Mr. Mahar's term is up on the RDA.
Well, we were given to understand, by my...
Yes, yes.
We were given to understand at one point that the RDA wasn't a town committee. Is that correct, Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
So that was the reason we appointed Peppin, that Peppin Mahar could be the town administrator to appoint Mr. Mahar to the FinCom.
So it's my understanding that there, there was discussion in the past about the status of the, I'm sorry, what was it? The housing?
RDA.
The RDA. And you know, the RDA is sort of a, like a hybrid where some of the members are appointed by, by the state, some are appointed by the town. So I don't recall giving an opinion that they were not part of the town, but you know, I think it all kind of came back to was that the existing language was, was vague. And you know, people understood it to mean that some positions were exempt, but no one really ever knew what those positions were. And as Jen pointed out, you know, for years, we've been trying to sort of figure out who should be allowed, what other town officials should be allowed to be on the Finance Committee and what other town officials should not be. And you know, as we sit here today after all those years, I still don't think there's consensus as to what that should be. You know, so, so this is a, another shot at that to, I think, in my opinion, it's, it's more clear than what you had before, but...
What's more clear than what we had before?
What's here now, what was proposed by the Finance Committee.
It's not proposed by us.
No, correct. That's right. What was proposed by the Finance Committee, in my opinion, is more clear than the existing bylaw, and most significantly because it finally offers a definition of what this position of financial responsibility means. But that being said, you know, until we go to start applying it, it's hard to say who's going to fall through the cracks or not. And I did talk to the Chair of the Finance Committee about this earlier today, and you know, I explained to him that the problem is, is that, you know, these are not terms that are in the general laws. These are not terms that get litigated in courts. You know, so it really ends up being up to, you know, us and ultimately you to try to figure out how to apply this bylaw. And you know, so I can't sit here and say that there's not going to be some loophole that, that someone's not going to try to come up with at some point. And so, you know, your, your options really are, in my opinion, you can, you can stick with the Finance Committee's language and see what the voters at town meeting think of that. We can come up with language that prohibits any town official from serving on the Finance Committee. Or we could just leave it open and say anybody can be on the Finance Committee, and you know, there...
There was, I think the sentence that I proposed was not that no one can be on the Finance Committee, but that if you're on the Finance Committee, you can't be on any other board commission or committee.
Well, that's more problematic because we can't, for example, say that you can't run for office because you're on the Finance Committee, or even that you can't be elected because we can't by bylaw set the terms for elected officials.
So it was just applied to appointed positions?
So you could make it just apply to appointed positions. But the cleaner way to do it, rather than having it be sort of external, have it be internal and say, if you want to be on the Finance Committee, you cannot hold any other position in the town.
And I think that's why we asked you to join us here this evening, Mr. Corvo, because this is, we have been all around this, but we've had difficulty coming up with clear, concise, and, and legal language. I think that's what we, what we need.
So would you say that again?
Yes, so you know, we could say, what the, it starts off, any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee, except that no person holding another position in the town shall be eligible for appointment.
And position is, is that clear?
Appointed position?
Well, now we can start to refine that and say, you know, I mean, is it every single person who has a relationship with the town, you know, whether they're elected or appointed, whether they're, you know, a contractor, you know, position would be very broad, you know, or we can start to narrow it and, and you know, make it only appointed positions.
I think that was, that was the general understanding, I think.
I think, I think it was. I think the difficulty here has been, we've had wording in the past. In fact, we had, I think, the term position of financial responsibility, and then that became a subject for debate, who a person of financial responsibility was. We had the term officer in there, and it became a subject of, you know, controversy, what defines an officer. So it's been very difficult to, to narrow it down. If I, and please, other members of the board, correct me if I'm, if I'm misstating this, but I think, I think the consensus of the board at the last meeting was that if you served on another appointed board in town...
Or committee or...
Or committee or, or board, you should, if you're on the Finance Committee, you shouldn't serve at any other appointed board or commission. Am I, am I correct there? Please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm just trying to go from memory, but I think that was the, the thought of the board.
And one of the reasons, again, I brought to last meeting was that because the Finance Committee really controls funds that could affect any other department.
Correct.
Should they come before them, that it was just, you know, almost like, and not to suggest that, that anything, you know, would, would not happen, that wasn't, you know, transparent and votes and things like that, it never has happened, but it's just something that was just, you know, it'd be nice if there was just a clean cutoff, that there was no, you know, person that would face a conflict when it came to voting on funds for a department.
And yes, the other question I would, I would have for you, do we need some kind of wording in there to specify that if you're an employee of the town, that you shouldn't be on the Finance Committee? It seems to me if you're an employee of the town, you probably wouldn't be on the Finance Committee.
So that would be, I mean, in my opinion, that would still be an appointed official.
Okay.
Because it's...
We don't need separate wording.
Because they're not, you know, the only, you know, employee that would be elected would be, you know, the town clerk, the treasure collector. But yeah, I think that...
Just the town clerk now.
Just the town clerk now. Okay.
Okay. So no person holding another appointed position in the town shall be a member of the Finance Committee? Is that...
What about elected?
Yeah. Sorry?
But what about elected? Some of it's...
Well, as Mr. Corvo said, you can't really control that. We have no authority to tell elected people.
True. Well, but see, what you can do though is you can, see, you can't say... Well, but see, what you can do though is you can, see, you can't say, if you're on the Finance Committee, you can't be on an elected board. But you could say, if you're on an elected board, you can't be on the Finance Committee. See, it's, it's like semantics.
I was the vice chairman of the Finance Committee, but when I got elected to the Select Board, I resigned from the Finance Committee. So that, that you could craft something like, like that?
Mark, uh, I was in that situation when I got elected here because I was on the Planning Board. Looking at the town bylaws in two point two Board of Selectmen, two point two point eight, a select board member may not hold any other elective or compensated office under government of the Town of Carver during the term for which he or she is elected. So would that be applicable here instead of saying a select board member, could it be a Finance Committee member? Can't hold any other office, so, so you could run or you could be appointed, but before you, are you resigning? I mean, that language is in the bylaw now, so.
So, uh, hold on one second.
It's page three of the 2022 bylaws, two point two point eight.
If I may, Jen, so that just references like word, correct?
Right, I know, but yes.
So we'd have to extend that.
Right, you have to expand it to, yeah.
Right, could, it could be changed to put in here, but there is wording in the bylaw that does, you know, prohibit a little bit of that. What of that wording could be used here to get across the point?
Okay, so if we look at this wording, may not hold, so we would take out a lot, so it would be may not hold any other compensated office under the government of the Town of Carver, nor any compensative appointed town officer employment for one year thereafter. So now the question becomes, okay, if you are appointed to an unpaid position, is that okay? Can you still be on the Finance Committee?
Well, no, that's not what I'm getting at, but like, can we just do a, a Finance Committee member may not hold any other elected or appointed, like, can that wording change to apply to finance? Because you said, we can't tell someone they can't go on the committee, like, you were making it seem like you can be on a committee and then before you get on, on the Finance Committee, you have to resign, right? Like, with what you and Sarah were saying, you guys were hashing it out, so you were trying to correct them, so.
So like, let's say that you're on the Finance Committee, right? And you want to run for Planning Board.
Right.
You run for Planning Board, you get elected to the Planning Board. We can't tell you, sorry, you can't be on the Planning Board because you're on the Finance Committee, but we can tell you, you can't be on the Finance Committee because you're on the Planning Board. So then you would have to make a choice. So you would have to say, I either want my elected position.
Right.
Or I want to be on the Finance Committee.
Right.
So I think, yes, that is fine to say, a Finance Committee member may not hold any other elective or compensated office.
What about appointed, like?
So now that's, that's what's missing from here.
Right.
Right, so that you would probably want to add to this, instead of saying compensated office, elective or appointed office.
Right.
Under the government of the Town of Carver.
Right, so we can use that wording that's already in the bylaw. So there is a way.
Let's use the word position rather than office.
That's fine, yeah, great.
All of a sudden got so schemed up about the word officer.
Guys, one question separate from the verbiage. And, and does the Board of Selectmen, have they got involved in changing articles from other, we're setting precedent here, I guess is what I'm saying, going in and changing an article or recommending a change to an article, or is that something that's common?
It's not common, no, I, I, I don't recall changing.
I think it, I think it came from the fact that at a certain point in time, um, several years ago, there were a lot of people that were on a lot of different boards that seemed to contradict what the Finance bylaw said, Finance Committee bylaw said. And it wasn't just one individual, so.
I think what John's asking, if, if a proposed article that's on here has the Select Board in the past changed what's been presented?
No, I see.
Because like, I agree with John, I was kind of thinking that in the back of my head, that have, has the board in the past changed the verbiage of articles when they've been presented to the, to the board? Versus just not recommending it and then on the town meeting floor, coming up with an amendment?
Well, that's why I suggested we leave it as it is and then, but come up with this amendment so that one of us can amend it.
And, and I'm just, and I'm saying it because I, I also agree with Jen, this was supposed to be a dual, working together bylaw.
It was.
And it wasn't.
Yeah, it ended up not being.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I guess I would defer to you, have this, as a Select Board, when presented in this form, change the verbiage.
We've never changed the weapons protection bylaw verbiage, we've never changed planning board verbiage.
We really haven't been offered, as I recall, we, there haven't been many articles in front of us that really, they weren't like this. You know, they really weren't many articles that needed, that the board felt needed, the wording needed to be changed.
Well, and I, I could say, I mean, I can't speak to that practice because I'm not usually here for these discussions. But, you know, what I would say is that if the, you know, part of the Planning Board's job is to write warrant articles, right? Part of the Conservation Commission's job is to write bylaws and regulations. Whereas the Finance Committee doesn't typically do this. And, you know, this is something that is sort of within the purview of the Select Board. I mean, this is setting like high level policy. But, um, you know, it really is up to you as a matter of practice, you know, how you want to proceed. I mean, I can see it, you know, sort of either way. You know, the, the other option is to just say, this isn't ready for prime time. We thought this was going to be a, a joint group effort and we haven't had an opportunity to be part of that effort.
And, and by that you mean just not put four point three point seven on the warrant at all?
Let's, let's do the other changes, you know, we've gotten through all these years with four point three point seven. There's certainly, you know, discretion on the part of the appointing authority to decide, you know, who should be appointed and who shouldn't.
And that's true too, we are the appointing authorities.
We do, and, and we.
Finance Committee, isn't it the town administrators?
I'm sorry, I'm serious. But we, we, we do have right now an interpretation of what the present four point three point seven says. So if we chose not to do, to not put four point three point seven on the warrant at all, then appointing to the Finance Committee would revert to what the opinion we have right now of the present four point three point seven is.
Which is, I mean, to be perfectly honest, I, I have a hard time reading four point three point seven as it is and imagining who is not subject to this.
Right, that, we, we've discussed this before, previous Select Board meetings.
And, and again, I'll get back to what I said the last meeting. If we, if we want it to just be FinCom and nothing else, we should just say that. Because it's, it is very, it can be interpreted very differently. And I think this is, if that's what we, the board wants, we should just do it.
I agree, and I also think that it's the FinCom that's seeking to change this bylaw. It's not the Select Board that's seeking to change the bylaw. We have an interpretation of what the bylaw says right now, it just doesn't say it very well. And, and, you know, we, but I, I think it, 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 we've put this off and we've put this off and we've put this off. And I think it's time we, we do something here and, and don't put it off any. Any more, or of course, say to, say to ourselves, okay, we're, we're gonna take four point three point seven, as Mr. Corbo mentioned, not put it on the warrant at all, and just at a, at a future meeting, sit, put it on the agenda and come up with a, come up with a, come up with wording for four point three point seven.
You mean for, for another town meeting?
For another town meeting, yeah. I mean, if we don't put it on the warrant this time, then, then I have to be there sometime.
The benefit to that approach is that if you, if, if you go with the Finance Committee's language and then you come in with a, a motion to amend on town meeting floor that people haven't seen, it's, it's going to cause confusion and you may end up losing the whole thing. And there's some other good stuff in here that, you know, we do want to, you know, roll out sooner rather than later, you know?
As much as I, as much as I hate to put this off any longer, I think that's a, that's a good point. And there are other parts of this Finance Committee bylaw that definitely need to be changed, um, they're, they're just incorrect, so.
I guess again, I'm going to go back to if, if, if the board doesn't want FinCom to let this be on anything, we should just do it now. So, I mean, is that, is that the world board right now? If it is, then, because putting it off, we're just putting off the decision for another year. I don't, I don't mean, unless we're in September, but, so, it's almost like, just, I don't know how we can do it. Do we want to take a vote, is that what we want, and then come up with the language or?
I think, I think, well, I think, given the timing, we probably have to come up with language before we leave.
Yeah, I, I think, we have to come up with language tonight. I think, I think Ms. Hewitt has been making some notes here, so she may, she may have some proposed language. Um, would you, would you like to offer?
Sure.
A, a, a motion?
That no person holding another, any other elected or appointed position in the Town of Carver shall be a member of the Finance Committee. Did I leave it, did I miss anything?
So I like this, under the government of the Town of Carver.
As opposed to what?
I think you just left it out. Right, so it should say.
Okay.
A Select Board, I'm sorry, Finance Committee member may not hold any other elected or appointed position under the government of the Town of Carver, here.
Where do you see that?
No, I just made that up. I'm reading from the, the Select Board bylaw.
Okay, no person holding another, any other elected or appointed position, I don't get it correct.
Under the government of the Town of Carver.
Under the government of the Town of Carver.
I know.
One caveat there, the original bylaw also includes regular town employees, do we want to continue that?
Well, I think they would be.
They're appointed.
Appointed positions.
Okay, just because the, the one in now says regular town employees, so if you want to cover it, we want to cover it.
Yeah, that's what I asked him previously and he felt that that, the appointed, should we put it in just a?
Right, appointed also means hired.
Yeah.
I will defer to the.
Yeah.
I will defer to town council here, like, we're trying to make this as simple as possible.
Let's do it, right.
Right, so what we have now is no elected or appointed officer, regular town employee, or person holding a position of financial responsibility. So who is not captured in that language?
I agree, I mean, I, I think pretty much everybody caught, captured in that language.
But then everyone was having, getting all upset about the word officer.
So if we change officer to position?
But can I, I'm sorry, could you read that back one more time?
So this is the existing bylaw. No elected or appointed town officer, or regular town employee, or person holding a position of financial responsibility.
And are we, in your legal opinion, if you're a member of, pick, pick a board, you're a member of the Earth Removal Committee, are you a town officer?
In my opinion, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, i- i- is there, is there any town, appointed town board that wouldn't be an officer?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I don't understand why we're going through all this.
This is the opinion Jared, Jared gave us like several years ago.
I understand.
Just so you know.
I understand.
Because I remember very clearly.
But I think we've gotten caught up in a lot of different verbiage that maybe, uh, uh, it seems to me that's pretty all encompassing, right, right there.
I, I would say that as, if I was going to make a change to this, to make it more encompassing is, I would get rid of this word, regular town employee, because that's, that could be misleading in that.
Read this, this is good, what you brought in.
I didn't bring this in, this is from the Town of Plunkton.
Yeah, no, I know, but did you physically bring this paper?
I, I had these at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think that's good, read that.
Well, well, just, I just have one question before we go on to reading. And this is what concerns me, if we, 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 we have an opinion from, I think, certainly town council, and when I hear it, I, I hear that opinion, the four point three point seven right now, the way it is right now, says that if you're on another board or committee, or if you're an employee of the Town of Carver, you can't be on the, anything but the Finance Committee, if you're on the Finance Committee, you can't be on anything else, correct? If we start changing the wording of four point three point seven, then we open it up to all kinds of debate at town meeting. And we may end up with six different motions, six different amendments going on. And the language just gets totally, who knows how it ends up? It may end up five times more unclear than it is right now. And it seems to me if we just don't put four point three point seven on the warrant at all, then we have language that we're looking for.
Yeah.
But we don't open ourselves up or open the town up to a, to six different motions flying back and forth and.
Except the Council on Aging is in there too.
But we already took, we took, we took that out in an earlier part, that, we're only talking about four point three point seven.
When did you take that out? Because it is.
That's in.
Is it, it is in four point three point seven?
Is it in four point three point seven?
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay.
I mean, I know it's minor, but.
Mr. Corbo, in your opinion, if we changed the existing four point three point seven, just to take out the wording for Council on Aging, would that open the entire four point three point seven up to, to, to different motions at town, at town?
And, and the second change we have to do is get rid of the word regular.
Well, again, I'm trying to craft language where we don't open the whole four point three point seven up to multiple motions at town meeting, on town meeting floor.
So we, yeah, we could make the argument that, um, if all you do is cross out Council on Aging, that it's not within the scope of the article to make other changes because the, you know, someone at home reading this warrant wouldn't have thought that you were changing the definition of who could be on the Finance Committee.
Well, the only problem with, if we, if we just do that, right now, we have three members of the FinCom that are on other boards and committees. So this bylaw has been in effect.
They would be able to live, last their terms out, right?
But what I'm saying is, they were appointed with this bylaw already in, in effect, correct?
Yes, they were, they were appointed, they were appointed with this bylaw in effect.
But what I'm, but what I'm saying is, if we want to just leave this as is, just take out the Council on Aging, we, we, it would revert back to the bylaw that was in effect when the three people that are on a second board.
So, so.
So what's going to stop the future appointments?
Because we were never informed about the appointments until it was too late for us to exercise the 15 days.
I vetoed a recent appointment of Mr. Germain's when, when Mr. Belvin was on the board and Mr. LaFawn appointed him to something, he was all, he was on.
No, I'm not talking about Mr. LaFawn because he let us know, he gave us those 15 days notice.
I know, but I, I did veto it.
Okay.
And then the appointment still went through because the Select Board voted to confirm the appointment. So, so the board has voted in contrast or against this bylaw.
If, if I recall, and again, I may be, I may be wrong here, I'm just going from memory. I think what that was, that was a reappointment to the Conservation Commission, not the initial appointment. And I think the reason the board went along with that reappointment was that we were in the process of trying to find some common ground on the Finance Committee bylaw. And we agreed to, to let that go through because we were working to find that common ground. Obviously, we've never found it, right? I, I may, I may be wrong there, that's, that's my memory in that.
I agree with that too. So like what Jim said, what's going to change?
So, Mr. Corbo, to, to you, if the board was to leave four point three point seven in place, except that we struck out the Council on Aging language, then we have, we have three, of three members, I believe, on the Finance Committee that are on other boards and committees. I think we have Mr. Germain, who's on ConCom, uh, Mr. Mahar, who's on, on the RDA, and, uh, Ron Clark, who's on the Cable Advisory Board. Would, would that mean that those three people were initially off those boards, or could the board, could the board, through the town administrator, make them some kind, some kind of notice that, hey, we've received an interpretation of four point three point seven, and we want you to know that when your current term is up.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not going to be reappointed.
Yes, you know, and, because don't forget, that these are appointed positions. And so, you know, there is discretion where even if somebody could come in and say, well, I'm not prohibited from serving because I interpret the language like this, that doesn't mean you have to appoint them or you have to reappoint them, but you still have discretion through the town administrator as to who gets to be on this committee. But you still have discretion through the town administrator as to who gets to be on this committee. And so, you know, somebody can, can come in and say, well, I'm not disqualified, and you might say, well, that's great, you're not disqualified, but we still don't think that a member of this other committee should also be on the Finance Committee. And that's our, and that's our prerogative.
And keep in mind, what could also happen is that people have to choose, and they choose their other committees, so then the Finance Committee is reduced. And that happened in the past with not enough members.
It, 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 it could be. I mean, certainly when we work together on the Finance Committee, we, we struggle to get a quorum sometime. But the will of the board, and I think the will is, the will of the board is, no matter how we word it, I think the will of the board is that if you're on the Finance Committee, you shouldn't be on another Board of Committee. And, and I, again, I brought up language from several different towns at the, at the last meeting, and I didn't even look that far. Plimpton, Halifax, Wareham, Middleboro, they all have language in one way or another that, that says that. And I, I didn't look very far, I just went to look for a few towns that were near us. So, you know, at some point, if quorums become a problem, then, then that's a problem we'll have to, we'll have to deal with, but, I, you know, I, I, myself, I, I just, I've always felt that if you're on the Finance Committee, you shouldn't be on another Board of Committee. And, again, they have that, well, a town meeting makes that change. They're going to have a $175,000, you know, Finance Committee fund that they're going to, to have, so, I just think the Finance Committee is such an important committee that if you're on the Finance Committee, you shouldn't be on anything else. But listening to, to all the arguments that have taken place tonight, I personally think the best way to, to go forward on this is to, to simply make the change, to remove that Council on Aging. Those four words from 4.3.7, leave the rest of it in place, knowing that we have, we've all, we're all here, we've all heard the same thing from Town Council, that we have existing language that says, if you're on the Finance Committee, you can't be on any other Board of, Board of Committee. And we may have other folks in town who may disagree, but we have, you know, ultimately, this is why we, we hire Town Council, and, to, to interpret, you know, differences of opinion. That's, I think that, that is a, a way to avoid what could be a, a long and multifaceted discussion at town meeting, that may end up with wording that's even harder to interpret than we have right now.
We just think we're having a difficult time coming to, you know, the exact wording, and you can see all kinds of merits going off on the floor.
Yeah, you, you can, and, and when that happens, I worry that you're going to end up with just tough language to interpret.
So you want someone to make a motion to strike those four words?
I think we should, I think it would be helpful to make a motion and have a vote, and then if it fails, we move on to something else. But I think, rather than go back and forth, it would be.
Okay, so, I make a motion to remove the words "or council on aging" from 4.3.7, and then.
That's it.
Put it on the warrant.
I'll second that. You have a motion, we have a second. And I just, again, for discussion, Mr. Corbo, when you're, when you're through, take your time, I don't wanna, I know we're complicated here, so it's, it's your opinion that by making that change to 4.3.7, that if people wanted to make changes in who could or could not serve in the Finance Committee, that that would be out of order or not in the scope of the article?
So, that is up to the moderator?
I understand it's up to the moderator.
And I would have to defer to his judgment, but if he asks me, it would be my opinion that further changes are not within the scope of the article, particularly considering the discussion that we're having here, where you're making a very deliberate choice not to include these other changes.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's my only question.
So, can, can, can you read the current one?
Yes. Any registered voter of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee except that no elected or appointed town officer, or regular town employee, or person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town shall be eligible for membership in such agency.
Is that the whole article?
No, and then it says, no member of a town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of the Finance Committee on any. I'm sorry?
Of such agency.
Oh, yeah, okay. No member of a town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining to the duties of a special committee of which he or she is a member. So I guess that's where we kind of go off the rails with the existing language. Like, what does that mean?
Well, at least the first part is clear.
Sorry about that.
I sort of kept reading the first time, like, oh.
Well, so are you?
Cut the last sentence, too.
Well, if we cut the last sentence, does that change the opinion you offered previously?
It certainly makes it more amenable to some other amendment.
What does that mean?
Meaning it's probably within the scope to.
Oh, okay.
Because we're putting people on notice that we're changing the criteria for membership on the Finance Committee.
But, so, I'm confused, so no member of a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean this.
No, that's okay.
No member of a town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining.
To the duties.
To the duties of a special committee of which he or she is a member. Does that have anything to do with the FinCom?
Well, see, it sort of takes away from the fir-, because the, the way I read the first sentence is, if you're on the FinCom, you can't be on anything else. But then the second sentence says, if you're on a town committee, you can't vote on a matter pertaining to the duties of that committee. So, the second sentence means nothing if the first sentence means everybody is.
But, not, not to disagree with the attorney in the room, but, but it doesn't say a member of a town committee, it says a member of a special town committee. And when I read that, what I.
No member of a town committee.
No, no, that's the left, end of the sentence.
The, at the end of the sentence, right down here. But when, when I read "special committee", what I interpret that being is maybe an ad hoc committee that was put together quickly to, to take care of, you know, not a permanent, permanent committee, a special, short-term.
Like the school building committee?
Yes, yeah, or a building committee, you know, the, the committee we put together to study technology in the town, in the, in the meeting room, something like that. That's what I read that as. Would your op- legal opinion be different than that?
No, I think that's a reasonable interpretation of that language.
But at first, it says no member of a town committee, then it goes to a special committee. Heard the first part of that sentence.
Well, I think the reason, again, I, I think the reason it says that is because you could have a Finance Committee member who, for lack of a better, you know, was put on, you know, the, the school, the school building, a committee to build a school.
That, that was me.
And, and, and something might come up at the Finance Committee that related to that. So they would have to, they would have to recuse themselves from that vote, that they, they couldn't vote on that. But that way, you're not, you know, if you have somebody that you wanna put on a building committee or some special committee, you're not telling them, okay, well, you're gonna have to leave the Finance Committee if you wanna serve for four months on that ad hoc committee.
So, the, the previous written opinion that I gave on this in 2021 was that an officer is someone who serves in the executive branch as opposed to the legislative, but you don't really have a legislative branch, that's town meeting, and who is an employee or serves in a position defined by law as opposed to an independent contractor. So you could say that, like, a school building committee or an ad hoc advisory committee is not a position defined in law.
Yeah. So in short, we should just remove "or council on aging"?
I think that's the place to start. I, I really, I think that's the place to start.
I mean, you know, I guess another thing we could sort of think about here is that, you know, the town administrator's the appointing authority, and you're the appointing authority for the town administrator. What if you just had a policy that said, this is the way that we interpret this, and in making his appointments, this is the direction that we give to the town administrator?
That's a good idea.
And just leave this alone, except for taking out "or council on aging"?
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous.
So, so now, I just made the motion to take out the words. Do we now need to put it on the warrant and recommend it? Do we have to do all, like?
Yes, we probably, probably do need to put 4.3.7 on the, on the warrant.
Yeah, so the, the way I was, I moved that we put 4.3.7 on the warrant, removing only the words "council on aging". So moved.
Okay. Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. So we're good here, we have it on the warrant, we have language we're fairly comfortable with.
What about the recommendation?
Um, yeah, I guess we should recommend it, or not recommend it as well. Is there a motion to recommend 4.3.7?
Make a motion to recommend it without the words "or council on aging"?
Well.
Like, as we.
4.3.7 as we.
And, and all the other changes to this, right?
Well, we already voted.
Yeah, we already, although, we just didn't vote on 4.3.7.
Okay, gotcha. I make a motion to recommend 4.3.7.
Oh, second. You have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. Mr. Corbo, we really appreciate your help on this one. This has been a, a long time issue. All right, and then we have the butter, Article 14, the butter lot sales program. And Mr. Fennessy, I believe you were gonna get some information from, for us on one of the items on there that was, uh, was maybe wet?
Yeah, that's what it was. It was unbilkable.
From the two-mile standard drive?
I'm sorry, let me just get to that here. Page is that on?
Right after the Finance Committee.
My paper's around.
Page 14.
14?
Article 14.
Why can't I?
Here, would you like mine?
Yes, I will, I will mine, thank you very much. All right, yeah, so, so that was that.
It starts here.
Yes, I'm just looking, I'm looking for this. So, so two-mile standard drive was the, was the question mark, right? And that was, that was wet?
It is, yes.
I mean, I looked that up, it, it looks like it's almost entirely wet. I just, it's, it's a 70,000 square foot lot. I wonder if the board sees any, any, any thought to, 70,000 square foot lot? You never know, it might come up at some point in the future. Is it worth, we don't see too many 70,000?
Holding on to you?
Yeah, I just wonder, it's a 70,000 square foot lot, is it worth possibly some?
What do you mean, we don't know what's gonna come?
Well, I mean.
Protection Act's gonna change?
No, but there might be, you know, we are looking for lots to try to build affordable housing and things like that, it is a 70,000 square foot lot.
If it's wet?
No, you can't, I just thought there might be some way of.
Do we know how much of it is wet?
It's just a lot.
It's a majority of it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's almost a whole, it's very wet.
And that was actually why I asked, just exactly, because that's a big lot.
Yeah, no, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, well, is there a motion to put Article 14 on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of putting Article 14 on the warrant?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to recommend Article 14?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of recommending Article 14?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's see, I think that's all the town meeting articles. Mr. Fennessy, do you have anything else on, on town meeting that we haven't covered?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Good to go.
All right. Minutes licenses topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair forty hours in advance of the meeting. We have a request for a one-day special license of bartending service of New England, 14 Cross Street, on April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's a child's play alpaca birthday event. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the one-day license, special license for bartending services of New England, the 14 Cross Street, April 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For a child's play alpaca birthday event.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it, no. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Select Board announcements. Mr. Carter?
Don't have any.
Ms. Bogart?
Nor do I.
Mr. Hoffman?
You say this, or should I say?
You, you go.
Okay.
I just want to remind everybody about Shane Gibbs' thanks fundraiser bingo on April 15th at the high school.
All right, thank you. It's yours.
And I echo that.
All right, and I will echo that as well. Our next meeting is on April 4th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, opposed? It is unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a good week.